Hey.
I feel like a little kid.
Hey.
Back to the wall. Sorry, just a minute. And then put these, these collars to the next lady. Yeah, that's done. Sorry, I don't know what else to say to that.
So did you have to have two different pull off this office?
I didn't look up there. I mean, we came from downtown.
Hey, Dave, for one more sound. Look like I'm in the bud and you carry on. And I want to, we're gonna get right in the car. Yeah, because you get to sit at the right place, you know. I always hated when I choose the chair. I'll find it.
That's over here. Guess I'm right sitting down here.
Did everybody get a chance to sign up for the comments? Not by the whole appearance. It's probably hearing you have a chance to see. I have a missing sheet, that's why I'm out.
No, I'm not. I'm meeting downtown.
I talked to, uh...
Oh, yes.
Okay.
Larry.
That's fine, I hadn't had to do it for that work.
Okay, we'd like to welcome everyone to tonight's May 17th, 2022 City Council Meeting. I would ask that everyone please turn off all electronic devices. At this time, we'll call on Councilmember Bob Ward for tonight's invocation.
Let us pray. Today being an election day, excuse me, we are reminded and remain especially grateful for the many freedoms of our democracy. We are particularly grateful for living in a democracy where we as citizens participate in our own governance. As we begin tonight, we pray that our world leaders come together and soon bring some peaceful resolution to the Ukraine crisis to stop and avoid any further needless death, destruction, and human hardship. We ask that you provide assistance to those who are in need and bring comfort and healing to those who are suffering. We are grateful for and express our appreciation to our city employees for their hard work and dedication in their service to the city. We acknowledge that through you, all things are possible, and we now pray for your guidance as we strive tonight to fulfill our responsibilities to our community. We pray that our deliberations will be with an open mind, that our decisions will be fair, be reasonable, and be according to your will. Amen.
Amen. At this time, we have a special announcement. The City of Burlington's Downtown Manager will call on Economic Development Director Peter Bishop up in here.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. It's great to be with you this evening, and it's not every day that we come up and announce a new hire at the city. We're new, we're hiring people every day. However, downtown's been a special place for the city, especially through the pandemic. We've seen some significant business growth. I mean, just the food hall alone welcomed six new businesses, including the food hall kitchen operation itself in the last year. But downtown's been a great success story for the City of Burlington, and I wanted to take an opportunity to introduce to City Council Aaron Nettles, who will be our new Downtown Manager. And so here's Aaron. Aaron is resident of Burlington. She comes to us from a very long experience in nonprofit management and working with executive boards and meetings. Aaron grew up in a downtown Main Street environment. Her family has owned and operated the Green McClure Furniture Store in downtown Graham for four generations. So having that experience growing up and then in addition to her event and nonprofit experience, we feel that Aaron's a great fit for this position. So we're ready for a leader downtown. We're excited that Aaron has joined us to be that leader, and just wanted to take the opportunities for you to meet her in person and announce her to our community. So thank you very much.
Thank you, welcome.
Welcome. Thank you.
Aaron, would you like to say a few words? I think you put you on the spot.
I don't really wanna say much. I just wanna say I am honored.
We're just as excited as Peter.
Thank you. I just wanted to say I'm honored. I know this is a great responsibility. I look forward to holding this position and being part of Burlington's history as we grow.
What if I had the opportunity to meet Aaron back in November? We have a good chat. Yep, welcome.
Thank you.
Our next item is proclamation of National Public Works Week, May 15th through the 21st, 2022. At this time, we'll recognize Public Works Director Gary Smith. We'll read the proclamation, then ask Gary to say a few words. Gary, come on up.
City of Burlington, North Carolina proclamation and recognition of National Public Works Week, May 15th through the 21st, 2022, whereas public work services provided in our community are an integral part of our citizens' everyday lives, and whereas the support of an understanding and informed citizen recital to the efficient operation of public work systems and programs such as water, sewers, streets, and highways, public buildings, and solid waste collection, and whereas the health, safety, and comfort of this community greatly depends on these facilities and service, and whereas the quality and effectiveness of these facilities, as well as their planning, design, and construction, is vitally dependent on the efforts and skill of public works officials, and whereas the efficiency of qualified and dedicated personnel who staff public works departments is materially influenced by the people's attitude and their understanding of the importance of the work they perform. Now therefore, I, Mayor Jim Butler, and the Burlington City Council, hereby proclaim the week of the May 15th through 21st, 2022, as National Public Works Week in the City of Burlington, North Carolina, and call upon all citizens and civic organizations to acquaint themselves with the issues involved in providing our public works and to recognize the contributions which public work officials make every day to our health, safety, comfort, and quality of life this 17th, day of May, 2022.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Mayor, council. I'd like to personally thank all the men and women of our Public Services Department for their service and dedication, and especially like to thank some of the people that I work with closely on a daily basis, Michelle Grogan and Kathy Murray with our administration, Alan Warren with Building Services, Austin Howell with our Streets Division, Chris Phelps with Solid Waste, Alan Idol with Cemeteries and Grounds, Todd Gilliam with Equipment Services. And I'd also like to thank, if I don't, I'll get in trouble, Todd Lambert with Engineering and Bob Patterson with Water Resources. Just a great group of individuals to work with, and I'm just honored to be able to work with them on a daily basis. And I hope your schedules, if you don't forget, this Friday, if you're able, we're gonna have a lunch for our public works employees, giving you an opportunity to meet some of these fine men and women, and it'll be 12 o'clock at Public Works this Friday. Hope you can be there. That's it.
We're back to our old location, isn't that right?
Yes, yes. Thank you, appreciate it.
Thank you for all the efforts of our public works. Our next item is Code of Ethics, disclosing conflicts of interest. At this time, we'll recognize City Clerk Beverly Smith.
Members of council, it's my responsibility to remind you of your duty to avoid conflicts of interest. I ask you there are even major conflicts concerning tonight's agenda items.
Our next item is the adoption of the agenda. At this time, we'll entertain a motion.
Motion to approve.
A motion, is there a second?
Second.
Have a motion and a second. All in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Our next item is the consent agenda. These items are typically non-controversial. If anyone has any questions about the following items, please let us know. Item A, to authorize the City of Burlington to retain Stouts Stewart McGowan and King LLP for their services in fiscal year 2021-2022 annual audit, and authorize the mayor and director of Finance and Risk Management to execute the contracts. Item B, to approve the City of Burlington entering to an agreement for Wellspring Services, Inc., to pay on an annual payment in lieu of taxes or pilot to the city for the next 10 years, fiscal year 2022 through 2023, through fiscal year 2031 through 2032. Said agreement will be renegotiated after that 10-year period. At this time, we'll entertain a motion on the consent agenda.
Move.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor signify by aye. Aye. Motion carries. Thank you. We have three public hearings this evening. Public hearing number one, a public hearing has been set to receive public comments on the submission of the annual action plan for the program year 2022-2023 of the Community Development Program. At this time, we'll recognize PTRT RC Staff Michael Blair and Asher Penn.
Mayor, if I could, just for, you know, to be totally transparent and for public disclosure, I served on the advisory board with Salvation Army, and the Salvation Army has made application for some of the CD block grant funds. I've spoken to Mr. Huffman about this, and I have no, I have no financial interest in it. He advised that I do not have a conflict, but I wanted to let everybody know that one of the grant recipients may be the Salvation Army. Okay.
Yep, so let the council recognize that Councilmember Ward disclosed that, but he will be actively participating.
Okay, Mayor Butler, council, thank you for having us. We really do appreciate being here again. This is the second year we've done this. Let me take my glasses off. Anyway, there was one change to what we presented at the work plan. Remember, we anticipated, we anticipated the funding for the CDVG program from last year's allocation. We received, actually, it was produced for the entire country late last week. We've actually lost about $7,300 from that last allocation. What that's done is it has not changed the infrastructure pot that you looked at at the work session, and it probably changed the public services by less than 1%. So it's fairly substantial at that point, and for the action here would be to, what we're asking is after you hold the public hearing, to adopt the CDVG 2023 Annual Action Plan for CDVG Home, subject to no additional substantive input being received during the public comment period, which ends on June 7th of 2022.
Okay, any questions from council? Okay, this is a public hearing. At this time, we'll open the floor for any public comments concerning this item. Is there anyone from this side of the room that would like to speak about this? Do we have anyone from this side? Seeing none, I'll ask for a motion to close the public hearing.
Motion.
Have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. All in favor signify by aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. At this time, we'll entertain a motion to take action on the request.
I move that we adopt the fiscal year 22, 23 CDVG Home Annual Action Plan, subject to no additional substantive input being received during the public comment period ending on June 7th, 2022.
We have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Have a motion and a second. All in favor signify by aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor and council.
Yep. Item two, a public hearing has been set for City Council to consider adopting an annexation ordinance for two parcels which are contiguous to the current city limits at the intersection of Grand Oaks Boulevard and Huffman Mill Road. The parcels total approximately 22.425 acres in size and consist of Alamance County Tax ID numbers 112469 and 177376. At this time, we'll recognize Planning Director Jamie Lawson. Welcome, Jamie.
Good evening. I'm not seeing anything displayed on either.
I don't know the answer to that.
Well, while we're working on the technical issues, I'll just do one into my presentation here. So as you recall, from the May 2nd work session meeting, we received a voluntary annexation request. This was for two parcels located at the intersection of Grand Oaks Boulevard and Huffman Mills Road. The property went through a rezoning request, and then a subsequent Technical Review Committee Site Plan application that was approved for roughly 30,000 square feet of medical office space, and that was in June of 2021. The applicant seeking water and sewer associated with the development. This is a standalone voluntary annexation request, but this is contiguous to the existing city limits. So staff recommends approval of the annexation request, and I'll be happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Any questions, council? Hearing none. This is a public hearing, so at this time, we'll open the floor for any public comments. Anyone on this side would like to speak on this topic?
And here is the map that shows the location of the two properties, and the beige is the existing city limits.
Anything else you need to go through with your presentation?
That's it.
Anyone on this side would like to speak? Would anyone on this side like to speak on this topic? Hearing none. At this time, we'll entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
We have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. All in favor signify by aye. Any opposed? Is there a motion to take action on the annexation ordinance as requested?
Mayor, I make a motion that we adopt the annexation ordinance for the Zero Grand Oaks Boulevard voluntary contiguous annexation effective at midnight on May 17th, 2022.
We have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor signify by aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Item three, a public hearing has been set for City Council to consider an application to rezone properties zoned medium density residential or MDR to be general business, limited use, GBLU. The properties are located westerly from the intersection of Whitesell Drive and Huffman Mill Road on the north and south sides of Whitesell Drive, addressed as 3213 and 0 Whitesell Drive, and consisting of Alamance County Tax ID numbers 112478 and 112474. At this time, we'll recognize Planning Director Jamie Lawson once again.
Good evening, Mayor, and City Council members again. So this item is a request to rezone a property that's currently zoned medium density residential as shown on this map. The proposal is for general business with a limited use for multifamily dwellings only. The map shows the location of the properties at the intersection of Whitesell Drive and Huffman Mills Road. The future land use map calls for this area to be regional commercial, so this request is consistent with that designation, and it complements the residential uses within that area. At the May, I'm sorry, at the April 24th, 25th, rather, meeting, the Planning and Zoning Commission recommended unanimous approval of this request, and this item was briefed at the May 2nd work session. We have not received any additional public comments, and staff recommends approval with consistency statement sheet option one included in your packet. Happy to answer any questions that you might have as well.
Questions for Jamie at this time? Jamie, is the petitioner here?
Welcome, welcome.
There is a representative of the petitioner.
Yeah, there you go.
Great pleasure to be back in front of the Burlington City Council, and sitting back there looking at the length of service to the City of Burlington is most, most impressive. I also do work for another municipality that has three relatively new board members, and I appreciate the longevity and dedicated service that y'all have given and are giving to the City of Burlington now that I am back a actual Burlington resident, and I did vote today. Lucas Development, Building and Development is out of Ashboro, North Carolina. They are the applicant. Brian filled out the application. He's the one that does the paperwork, three brothers. Darren is here from Ashboro to speak if there are any questions about it. It's very rare that I appear before you with a staff recommendation, a consistency with the plan, and a zoning commission recommendation unanimous. So I don't want to belabor the point, but we have apartments that are very nearby. It's consistent with your long-range plan. It is in harmony with apartments that are very nearby. It is a good transition from the interstate where it faces to the businesses that are located behind an office and institutional, and I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have, but I don't want to belabor the point. As I indicated to Mr. Cheek beforehand, brevity is the soul of wit, and I'd like to be brief if I can be.
Any questions for Mr. Brown? If we have any, we'll certainly give you the floor.
Thank you.
Mr. Brown, absolutely. This is a public hearing, so at this time, we'll open the floor for any public comments on this item. Anyone from this side of the room would like to speak on this item? Anyone from this side? Hearing none, we'll entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
Motion to close the public hearing.
We have a motion, is there a second?
I second it.
All in favor signify by aye. Any opposed? The public hearing is closed. Is there a motion to take action on this request?
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion, please. I make a motion to approve the request to rezone properties zoned medium density residential MDR to general business, limited use, GBLU. The properties are located westerly, that's an interesting adverb, westerly, from the intersection of Whitesell Drive and Huffman Mill Road on the north and south sides of Whitesell Drive, addressed as 3213 and 0 Whitesell Drive, and consistent, and consisting of Alamance County Tax Identification Numbers 112478 and 112474. The motion is based upon the consistency of the proposed rezoning with the comprehensive plan in that the future land use map in Section 4 land use of the comprehensive plan calls this areas to have original commercial uses. The request is compatible with the adjacent residential uses. This action is reasonable and in the public interest in that the comprehensive plans calls for residential uses in this area. The request is compatible with the existing zoning and land use, land uses in that area.
Thank you. We have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor signify by aye. Any opposed? Motion does carry. Thank you. Lawson for being here.
Thank you, Mayor, and council, appreciate that. Would like to point out that Jamie Lawson and Nolan Kirkman schooled me pretty well on the limited use category, and I do appreciate that.
No problem.
Our next item is the City Manager's Report. We'll call on interim City Manager Dave Cheek.
Thank you, Mayor. I just would like to announce, it's been pushed out already, you have a press release, but we have hired an assistant city manager from Burlington, Mr. Craig Honeycutt. From, he's currently the county manager. Yeah, Wayne County. I keep wanting to say Sampson County. I even put it out in the email today, but he's current county manager of Wayne County. He's actually a resident of Burlington, former county manager in Alamance, knows this area well, and is very excited about starting here on July 5th.
July 5th. Any other items in here?
I don't have any here.
Okay. At this time, we'll transition to our public comment period. We do have one signed up on the public comment, Mr. Peter Morkan. Welcome. Please give your name and address for the record in five minutes.
Good evening, Mayor, council members. My name is Peter Morkan. My address is 474 Thompson Road, Graham, North Carolina, 27253. Many thanks for hearing me this evening. I must apologize for my funny accent. I've spoken to bodies like this before, and I happened to speak on the same subject, which is charter schools, almost exactly 22 years ago. And on that occasion, I came before a body like this, obviously not the same people, asking to open a school with 320 students in Altamore Hall. That school is called the Clover Garden, Clover Garden School, and this August, it will be expanding to 955 students. Now, remember, it costs about $10,000 per student to build a modern high school, although this is a K through 12. So a school of that size would cost $90 million to the taxpayer. So it's not a, not a small thing to build a school to accommodate 955 students. And it was all done with private money, not a penny out of the county coffers. So on the back of this sheet, there's the address that I made 20 years ago. But tonight, I'm here to make an appeal to you. This is the present time, and it's a much shorter address, and you'll be glad to hear. I represent an organization called Free Financial Reform for Excellence in Education, and we are volunteers. We're really, really cheap. We cost you nothing because we don't get paid. Now, I want to make four points. There is a huge demand for school choice, not just in North Carolina, but especially here in Alamance County. Free has a track record of starting charter schools. We started six so far. Now, we haven't started any lately, and we'd like to do it again if you, if you will support us, because it cannot be done without community support. If you don't want the schools, then I need to walk away and go somewhere else, and I'm certainly not going to push myself in where I'm not wanted. We save money, I made that point, and charter schools strengthen K through 12 education. We have four charter schools here in Alamance County, and we serve over 10% of the population. And two of those schools are free schools. That would be the River Mill Academy in Graham and the Clover Garden School in Altamore Hall. Free schools perform well in terms of conventional measures such as test scores, graduation rates, SAT scores, parental satisfaction, and cheapness. The reason we're able to do this, we have a very highly efficient business model. We are more efficient than traditional K through 12 schools, and we're even more efficient than private schools. It may be hard to believe, but it's true. And because of that efficiency, we're able to attract money from banks. Banks love us, and they burden us with all this money, then we build the school. It's not my money, it's coming from the banks. Now, the fourth point I was trying to make, charter and traditional public schools conform to the same rules that we have oversight from the government, and we, the charter schools are overseen by the DPI in Raleigh. What would be really nice would be to have you folks oversee us, and that is possible under North Carolina law, but it's never been done. So this Burlington might be the place to try it, and that's why I'm here tonight. Now, why, what makes free schools different? Why are we different? Well, traditional public schools, they have a top-down approach, and they apply what is called best practices. And what that does is it applies a uniformity to all the schools, and that crushes the creativity of the principals, the students, the teachers, everybody. of the principals, the students, the teachers, everybody. Free does exactly the opposite. We give the maximum freedom to everybody so that everybody's able to be creative. And that's why no two free schools are alike. Everyone is run by a different board, and the boards are completely independent. They don't listen to me. They listen to the community. I think I've run out of time, though. All right. If I could just make it close, here's what I'm actually asking you. If there's a problem with the free schools, it is their size. The two in Alaman's County are already very large, over 900 students. My reason for being here is to suggest a remedy. Burlington should consider setting up three or four small charter schools so the total enrollments, 1,000 maybe. And the saving in taxes to the county would be maybe 50, 100 million dollars. And we, Free, will provide the startup funds and the buildings. And I therefore ask this council to consider setting up a study committee to look into this as a possibility. And thank you for listening. I've been a bit idyllic here, so I'll give you the actual statement if you don't mind.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Morgan, for that information. And I do, we had the pleasure of speaking on the phone a few months ago. You called after, I think, the mayor's radio show, and we touched base. So, I know you've provided this some information, and we appreciate that. Thank you. This time, we'll move into council comments. A couple of items. One, I just wanted to make council aware that Peter, Nolan, Morgan, and David and myself met today with Stephanie Blair, the regional representative for U.S. Senator Tom Tillis's office, just to talk about some things in our area. We had a good meeting, probably an hour and a half, David, when you say. Couple of topics. One was we spent a lot of time talking about Western Electric and the needs there, and it seems like we're going to get a second round of support from our elected body in Washington to see if we can get some timelines associated with some of the conversations that we've had in the past. And then we had a very interesting conversation around federal support for Tucker Street Interchange and the economic development factions, and the airport and some of the other things, and how they kind of go together. So, it was certainly good to have a representative from Senator Tillis's office to be here with us. And then the other item I had that was brought to my attention, and I know it, but I've noticed it because I drive by it every day, but is it just me, or has anybody said anything about the trees that Duke Energy trimmed on Huffman Mill or Church Street at the mall? Has anybody said anything about that? Has anybody seen it? It looks like it's going to fall on Church Street. Is that...
Here, you want to speak to this? I'm scared I'll be communicating.
Okay. Didn't mean to put you on spot, but it's just like every day somebody's...
No, I know. I see it. I see it every day. I know exactly. It covers almost two lanes.
It's a goalpost. I want to kick a football through.
You could, and you probably could. So, I could, so, Nolan. No, we did look into it. We went out and had the, Todd went out and his guys, they went to see if it was in the right of way. We were really hoping it was in the right of way where we could go in and have that taken down, but it's not. But we are in the process of talking to Wells Fargo. The company that owns that building is in New York, but we've asked them if they would please contact them to see what we could do about those because they are, they really, they look terrible, but it does look like a potential problem. We've actually talked with people at the state. The DOT will not take it down until something happens. If it falls in the road, they'll be there to pick it up. It's their responsibility to take it away. But, you know, right now, it's on private property, so we really can't do anything. But we are talking with them now to see if they would agree to maybe take those down because they do look terrible.
Okay, good. Good feedback. Thank you for that. That's really all I had. Any other council comments?
I forgot to mention one item. The Duke Energy... Nolan, won't you mention this one? Tell them...
Sure. Well, I think I had that on my list, and that's why I asked. Is there anything else you want to talk about?
Yeah, I'll drop the ball.
Yeah, just a quick update on the downtown street lighting. We were looking at trying to increase the lighting for downtown to help with various issues. So, Duke completed, and I think we had sent this to council in an email, the one block between Lexington and Spring on Front Street. And so, that is complete. So, we kind of, from a staff perspective, we're looking for some feedback.
Okay.
It's going to be a little too bright to leave here and go out, but I think around 9:00, unless council's already looked at it. But at this point, what we're trying to determine is, is that bright enough for that block? Do we want to continue that and other blocks? I think that's some of the feedback we're looking for.
And it's Lexington to Spring?
It's on Front Street between Lexington and Spring.
Yeah, okay.
And, you know, I think Brian has some additional information if needed in terms of, you know, what that would look like for continuing that.
We took some video and pictures, but you can't get the effect of it by looking at those, so suggest you try to go by there one evening, maybe.
Yeah, let's everybody try to get that accomplished. I know we've worked hard on trying to put a plan together, and this is sort of step one to that, so if we can all get by there and give some feedback to Nolan, it'd be appreciated.
Sounds good. Thank you.
Yep. And I think I was given a request to go into closed session. Mayor, I'd ask the city council to vote at this time to go into closed session pursuant to NCGS 143, that's 31811, and four, to discuss matters relating to location or expansion of industries or businesses in Burlington, including economic development and things. We've had a request for closed session. Is there a motion? We have a motion. Is there a second? Second. All in favor signify by aye. Any opposed? This time, we'll enter closed session. Nolan, we'll try to stay in closed session till then.
We had our own Art to Art out here while you guys were doing whatever you did.
Hey Thomas, good to see ya.
I can assure you our conversation was a...
Our share was very good, Thomas.
You guys missed out.
Yeah, great show we did.
There Bob, is there a motion to go back into open session?
Start a move.
Is there a second? Got a motion in the second? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Aye.
Thomas, did you get that? We cried.